Let's go with that clock, it says six o'clock. We'll open the meeting, call the meeting to order. May 20th, 2019 is the regular meeting of the Hazen Union School Board. Are there amendments to the agenda? I have some suggestions. We're going to have the benefit of a student presentation tonight on the solar panels. It's been suggested that could come right after the public comment. Lisa Cathcart is here from Head Start. We'll get her in the doc pretty soon.
And move Action Items Three and Five.
And move Action-
Three and Five.
Action Items-
Action Item Number Six, Action Items. Move Number Three and Number Five.
After the student presentation.
Is that adequate?
Yes.
Okay. Any objections to those changes? Any objection? Hearing none, then by unanimous consent, we will trigger the agenda like that. Any more amendments to the agenda? Any more amendments to the agenda?
Cratsberry's here, sorry.
Okay. The next item is to approve the minutes of the board meeting on April 22.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Any discussion approving the minutes from April 22? Hearing none, all those proceed to the vote. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, and the minutes are passed. And now for public comment. Is there anybody here who wishes to make a public comment? Members of the public? I see students here, not really public. No public, so comment?
Sorry, I don't know if this is appropriate time to do so. So I was invited to come back this week about the Ireland trip. I just don't know if we're on the agenda tonight.
Ah, okay. Well, let's put that on the agenda. Without objection, we'll add that to the agenda. You may recall that there were some solar panels installed at Hazen, and it was expected that that would contribute to holding down the electricity costs of this organization, or at least make a contribution by not burning so much fossil fuel to get our electricity. And who's making the presentation for the students?
So it'll be this Slims class from ninth graders from my class. Are you ready?
Yes, Mr. Mo.
Let's all sit in a circle. I don't know if you can be around where that's long circle.
Ah, right, so let's head over.
And we'll be using the screen a little bit, so if you can see the screen, great. Okay, well, I guess I should start. So I'm Jay Modri, I'm the teacher of this class. It's a ninth grade class, and the idea came from a new program on NPR, and if you guys, or it's VPR, actually. Did it work? Every week they look into a new public funded thing and see how it worked out. They explored grants for electric cars. They explored, or I guess it's this week, they're doing efficient wood stoves, and there's been some state grants for wood stoves. So I thought I'd have these guys look into our investment in solar panels. In 2010, this, the version of this class that existed in 2010 wrote a grant, and they got $50,000 for solar panels on the school. The school board contributed five in matching funds, so the total bill was $55,000. And we put up 5 KW of photovoltaic panels, and we put up a solar thermal system at that time. And these guys are here to tell you how they're working and what the issues are. So first off is going to be, Kayden, you're going to tell them about the solar thermal system?
So solar hot water cost about $5,000 in 2011. For 20 gallons of fuel, that's about what we were burning a month. If it's $2.50 per gallon, we're saving $600 a year. We've already saved $4,000 in eight years it's been installed. We used glycol in the lines so they don't freeze and burst. Company says every five years you have to change it and spend eight. That's the tank that all the glycol goes in. That's the pump that's powered by the sun. Those are the lines. There's tiny lines in there which the glycol flows through, which then the sun heats up. Here's Cooper with solar panels.
For the payback solar panels, you convert light to electricity using semiconducting materials that only work when they get warm enough. Back of the panels are two, one inverter on every two panels, and they convert DC to AC so we can use the power that they need. And our system is rated a 5-kilowatt system, which our school uses 100, and you power a home with 6.6, 7-kilowatt system. And it's Aiden and Tamara with payback time.
Hey, so payback time is the amount of time takes the payback investment. So, for example, if you invest $1,000, then sell your home, this would save you $500 annually. So two or five years would be a good investment, more than that would be not very smart. It also depends on how much you're paying and how much of the cost of product is. Now going to curse.
Typical solar payback time is usually eight to nine years to pay off. The cost of solar panels is 68 percent less today than it was when the school bought them. Some of the solar panels are broke. Here's Cooper.
The solar panel payback time is 36 years. The solar panels when we bought them were way more expensive. Now it's $15,000 for an installed system, and back then it was $47,000. Next slide is to Haley on the lot of them. With the energy.
From 2012, if you haven't seen this, this is the total solar power energy per year. For 2012 to 2017, as you can see, there's about a two-thirds difference of kilowatt hours. Another reason why we think that the solar panels are broken is because from August 2013 to August 2018, the percentage of power output that the solar panels gave off went down 76 percent. About a month ago, we left behind the inverters, and seven of the inverters had red lights and two had green lights. Now nine, out of the nine inverters have red lights. We are constantly coming to check them out.
Yeah, so by now it's paid for itself, the solar hot water, and we're overdue for glycol replacement and system failure, kind of more likely. For the solar photovoltaic, we're many years from it being paid for. Failed inverters are costing us about $50 to $100 monthly. And the warranty will cover the new inverters, but the labor is estimated to cost $280.
People have any questions for these fine young folks?
So I'm wondering if someone could summarize the recommendations that your team would make? Like, what's the most sensible thing for us to do moving forward?
Don't look at me, you guys. Who can do it? Extra credit. What's the most important thing to do in the next course we lets out?
Probably have the guy come to check them out, see what's wrong with them.
To confirm that they're busted?
Yes.
Panels are busted?
Yeah.
It's not the panels, it's the inverters.
Yeah, we also-
The inverters.
They said it's a very common problem.
Yeah. We also called them, and they told Moji to reset the inverters. So he reset them, and then we went up like a few days later, and that's when the nine of the nine were busted.
Can someone explain what the inverter does?
We're just paying for DC.
Conversion DC to AC. They had that on the slide.
Sounds stupid.
They had that.
They set it on a slot.
It was on the slide.
DC to AC.
I think Cooper said it makes it, puts it in a usable form.
But we don't know how it does it.
Oh, the electronics of it? Yeah.
I mean, it's a component that is replaced, is that it? We don't-
A little electronic box. And it did not- The green light's supposed to be on, the red light's on. It's not good. But fortunately, it has 50-year guarantee.
50-year? How long a guarantee?
50.
50.
But that doesn't cover the labor cost that's going to come out of school funds. I see some more hands over here.
I more recently had solar photovoltaic solar panels put up, and I have an inverter for the entire bank of 16. So, which is guaranteed, by the way, for 25 years rather than the 50 you're talking about. But that is, it's guaranteed, and the panels and the inverter guaranteed after 25 years to be at 87 percent efficiency. That's the panels and the inverter. And I'm, as I say, ours is newer technology, probably much better processing for the chips and all of that.
We made a trade-off when we got them. There was an option to go with less inverters, but it didn't have the monitoring that this has, so we wouldn't be able to report the kilowatt hours as well, if we can.
Yeah, mine, I can dial a code on my computer at any time and get that, or I can call Waterbury, and they can ping the system and see what may be problematic there. So that technology's improved over the last decade.
Get another question?
Just a point of clarification, is it $280 per inverter to repair? Or is it $280 for the nine?
It's just for the service. So just for the guy to come to check it out.
Just to check it out?
Yeah.
Do you think that, sorry. Do you think that based on the reduction in cost and the amount you're seeing in terms of savings, you think that would make sense to expand what's up there and see if you could realize future savings?
Much cheaper now, so why wouldn't you want to give more now?
Can technologies improve too?
The gentleman back there is-
How much space does it take up? Is it on the roof?
Yeah.
So that's the south wall of the auditorium.
Yeah.
So if you go out to the softball field and you look back at the school, you see that. You can tell they got to go up on the roof, which is a high point in the problem. And the other one is, that's over the loading dock, which is, you can see the PEs in the background. So if you go to the softball field and look back at the school, you see both.
And each panel is about how big?
About 30 by 60? 30 by 75, maybe? So they, 18 of them cover that, most of that wall.
Probably these days they're a lot smaller.
Do you have any way to store the energy that it produces that you don't use?
You're only going to make-
Do you have a battery?
No, there's not, so it's a grid-type system, there's no storage.
Right, so all the power you generate that you don't use just goes right back to electric?
Right, right. And the solar thermal, we can store the heat from that. So there's a hot water tank that stores that, so it can, if you have a sunny day, the next day it can defray the hot water cost the following day.
You don't get many sunny days on a day.
No, I haven't had one since, what, last year?
So if you figure in how many sunny days we have, is it really worth it?
Well, what do you guys say, is the solar thermal worth it? It's paid for itself already, so.
So if I'm correct, it sounds like it's a $280 thief to have a gentleman come out and check it out.
Yes.
The warranty covers the, what do they call the?
Converters.
Converters, right. And we're losing about $50 to $100 a month. It seems like the math would favor doing something about this. Good work, guys.
Does the class have a proposal?
I think this is beyond their pay grade. I think it's early maintenance review at this point.
Is there a reason why they've been let go for so long without attention? We don't know how long they haven't been working, right?
We didn't look into it until a month and a half ago. I don't believe anyone else did, so no one's paying attention.
I mean, even as like 2015, they were emitting around the same, but like immediately 2017, it's like dropped.
Yes, there's a missing year in there, you can see Audrey. And somewhere in that missing year, there's a precipitous- It's really kind of a steady drop, though. It's hard to say what exactly happened.
Yes, yeah.
I don't believe it was the weather changing that accounts for 75 percent of the drop.
Do you believe that negative temperatures that we have here affect those inverters?
I don't know enough about it. I know the panels work slightly better in colder temperatures. Slightly better. The colder it is, the better they work.
Hell, yes.
Right, but the inverter, I couldn't say. I couldn't say.
And is there any plan to, as far as you know, to do the glycol replacement on the, for the hot water?
Unaware of any plan to do the glycol. It's probably something we should take care of, because that system is actually, it's an effective system, yeah.
So you like the grant for the original system. Is there, would it be possible to write another grant at some point to try to expand these if they're working well?
You know, the president's, he could write it.
Was it a Vermont State grant or a federal grant?
No, it's federal.
It was a federal grant.
Bernie Sanders actually sent us the opportunity. He sent us an invitation to make.
Okay.
So is there money in the budget in maintenance to have the visit for the service for this fiscal year?
I would think so. I mean, that's minimal amount of money. I would absolutely think so.
That to step forward to next year's, next year's budget as far as looking for inverters?
And also get a price on the glycol switched, too.
The inverter is already covered because of the warranty. It's just the installation.
I think the $280 will take care of that entire repair. And the glycol, I have no idea, but I can't imagine it's more than a few hundred bucks.
They got to pump it out and flush it and put it away.
More questions for these fine young folks?
Is there something, if in terms of checking out the system, that we can do here at Hazen? For example, that's quite a surprise. You must have been surprised when all those red lights came on on the inverter. And if they're not falling apart at the same time, but piece by piece, then maybe it's worth checking them out regularly? Do you have any suggestions on setting up a system where that can be checked locally?
I think this class could take on at least the monitoring of it. And we're not up for the repairing. But I think we could easily do what we've done so far on a more regular basis, now that we're aware that that's something that needs to be done. Yeah. And you can tell from the data, it looks like it was sort of an incremental drop-off.
Right, right. Yeah, that might give us a clue about why the drop-off. Good work.
Any other questions? I know there's people waiting to be part of the public comment, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan.
So if you guys leave, Slims class, just have a seat for one quick second. I just want to say that the school board has just recently made part of their monthly agendas a special place for students and teachers to come to the board and share things that are going on in the school. And you guys are the second group to do so. And I can tell you from someone who sits through these board meetings month after month that it's a whole lot more interesting to leave on the board when our students come and share with us what they're doing. And tonight it was great to have families here, students as well, so spread the word. We would like to have this be more part of how the board works.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity.
Good job, you guys.
All right, so we're going to go with Brandy next.
Yes, Brandy, can we have you report if you're ready, please?
So I handed out an Excel spreadsheet, transactions ever since day one of the fiscal year, '07. Just stating where we're at at the end of April. Last page, next time I'll do the grid lines and so forth. So at the end of April, we had $1,031,342.32. That's in checking. In the ICS, we had $909,809.31. And then still owing the money we had borrowed at the beginning of fiscal year And I coincide with Brittany from OSSU, the bank recs that we match. Do the transfers, I do the transfers. Is anybody missing one? Does everybody have a handout?
Any questions for Brandy? All looks shipshape to you, Brandy. Everything looks shipshape to you? Any questions for Brandy? If not, I guess we can let her go home. Thank you, Brandy.
Thank you.
We need to approve this. Yeah, you should. Yeah, I should vote to approve this.
There's a motion to approve the treasurer's report submitted today. Is there any discussion? Any discussion?
I understand. Question? And maybe as I come on the board a little bit longer, I'll be able to understand how to brief this a little bit better. But, and I don't need to know all the, like, the tax rela information about it, but is this how it is normally presented? It's not?
No, no. This is a, they've been doing a lot of work because of the cash flows for the TANs, so this hasn't been plugged into, this is her tracking worksheet.
Okay.
So we have a board package that she normally puts together, which is, we'll give you a cash flow, and much easier.
So for my, my accounting that I do off-grid, off from their system, because their system already generates a cash flow balance sheet. But for, in order for me to transfer money, I need to keep track and make sure there's no bouncing, there's no-
Right, right.
And so this is how I keep track of it.
Yeah.
And I coincide with Brittany, so we're in sync.
Right. And this makes complete sense to you? You're amazing.
So these accounts payable, PR's payroll.
Okay.
Your deposits and then your transfers. You have your account that we borrow against is your ICS. And then the money we owe that we borrow at the beginning of the fiscal year, we still owe back to the bank.
Okay.
In your interest, it's all locked there.
Thanks.
Any more questions for Brandy? So we have a motion, I think, to approve this report. Any more discussion? Discussion, let's proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving the report of the treasurer, please say aye. All those opposed, say no. And the treasurer's report is approved. All right. Let's move on to the Town of Hardwick wastewater project and the proposed release.
So in your board folder, you all should have documents that Carrie was nice enough to send over earlier in the week.
We have some copies here that we can pass out.
That would probably be helpful. I don't think everybody has them. Because I don't think the ones that'll be printed in the office, I don't think they're printed there.
So do you want me to give some background on it?
Absolutely, because we know far more about this than I do.
So I'm Carrie O'Brien. I'm the district manager of the Caledonia County Conservation District. Actually, not the Town of Hardwick Wastewater Project. It's a Hazen Union Campus Stormwater Project. So we, it was born out of the Town of Hardwick Stormwater Master Plan, which is probably where we got confused, which went, Stone Environmental, this is, you can introduce yourself.
I'm Peter Zorcheck with Stone Environmental.
So Stone Environmental did the stormwater master plan in the Town of Hardwick, which essentially is a process of finding where in town we can better improve the management of stormwater for our purpose of water quality. Also looks at erosion and sedimentation as well. So one of the projects that was identified in that plan is the stormwater drainage from the Hazen Union Campus, which most of that is drained out towards the front of the school into, towards the athletic field. There's a paved swale just down the hill that goes down to the field that outfalls into the town's drainage system from there. So this proposal is to make improvements to that system. So Peter can walk you through it, but we are basically here tonight to update the board. We are essentially finished with the design, so we are hoping to go out to bid on the project in the next couple of weeks. So we wanted to talk with the board about the timing of construction and just answer any questions that you may have for the project. So Peter, you want to do a quick?
Sure, I'll give a quick overview. As you flip through these plans, I printed them double-sided. I think probably the most useful ones to, or sheets to look at are three and four, they're back-to-back. Sheet three sort of gives you an idea of where this stormwater practice is proposed, which if you look, it's sort of right at the entrance to the school campus above the, sort of the baseball field on the slope there. It's probably an area that most of you wouldn't pay a whole lot of attention to, but it's the discharge to the stormwater collection system from the majority of the parking and some of the runoff from the tennis courts. And then there's also another swale that sort of catches some of the runoff off of North Main Street, and it all discharges on that bank, and then ultimately ends up in a catch basin that goes to the Hardwick Stormwater System. So if you jump from sort of that location over onto sheet four, you can see what we're proposing, which is a stormwater gravel wetland to essentially be built into, if you take a look out there, there's an existing paved swale halfway down that bank. And that swale's actually kind of accumulated sediment and started the road vegetation in it, so you don't, you wouldn't actually notice that it's paved at this point unless you really take a good look. So sort of from where that existing paved swale is, we're proposing to build this gravel wetland, which essentially will capture the stormwater coming out of the existing inlet pipe, drop it into a sediment for bay, which allows sort of sediment and the solage to- pipe, drop it into a sediment for bay, which allows sort of sediment and the solid to settle out before going into the gravel wetland system. And it discharges over a, sort of, a berm, stone spillway into the gravel wetland. And the concept of the gravel wetland is to allow the stormwater to infiltrate down into a stone saturated zone where a lot of the treatment of that stormwater and pollutant removal can happen. So if you look at the, on sheet four, on the lower portion of the plan, you can kind of see a plan view of how that will be built into that bank and some of the important site features. And then above that is sort of a cross-section of how this thing is built and the flow through the system. And the gravel wetlands work well for a couple of reasons. They provide a lot of treatment in that stone area, and you also get treatment from the plants that are in the wetland soils. But this is also sized to provide a little bit of detention and slow down the stormwater also. And you can see on the right of the sort of cross-sectional picture is the outlet structure, which is sort of a four-foot diameter concrete structure with various orifices that control flow out of the stone wetland and sort of allows the system to behave differently for different-sized storms, essentially. So all of that will discharge into the existing swale and ultimately still go to the existing catch basin that goes into the town's stormwater system. So that's an overview. The hope is to get this out to bid in the near future so that we can get this built this summer and take advantage of grant funding.
So I have a grant for construction. The only piece in there for the school was that we'd love to engage some students in the project, so I just think I saw the teacher that I need to talk to about that. And we were thinking maybe, we expect to be doing some plantings around the stormwater system, so maybe they would like to help out with that, and I would be happy to come into the school to talk with them about it. So we have, you know, a grant based on an estimate that we made for the project, so we're crossing our fingers that the bids come in, in that budget. But otherwise, this is something I'm handling financially and will manage the bid process as well. So I did email John a, basically what we call a permission slip, just to be able to move forward for our records, that we are supportive of that, of the project. And who, so Jeff McCleese is not here anymore?
He will be finishing out this year.
This year, okay.
He will be here this summer.
Okay. So we had spoken with him about maintenance, he didn't feel it would be a problem, the maintenance on this unit, obviously it's mostly just ensuring that the for bay is cleaned out and there'll be some other parameters. So there would be a maintenance agreement at the conclusion of the project, that we'd have Hazen Union, either somebody from the school board or your facilities manager sign that, just to make sure that the project will be maintained. So that would be another step we'd have.
Where's the road, roadway? Any reference to there?
I know, but as far as this thing, the...
So, so this is the access road.
This would be the discharge?
Correct, yep. This is High Street over here, or North East Street.
Okay. So if this is maintained, what's the timeline on this as far as the life expectancy? It looks like you're just putting in a very, very good leach field.
It's very similar to a very good leach field, yes. I would probably expect a similar lifespan as leach fields, although these are relatively new practices. A lot of the research happening out of UNH. They put a lot of their systems in in the early 2000s, and I believe they're all still functioning fine and doing quite well.
Okay. And then to renew it, does, do you have to excavate the gravel that has sealed it up or what, at the end of 40 years? You don't know yet.
Yeah, I can't say we really know yet, and it's a lot about maintenance. A lot of these issues is that sediment for bay, exactly.
Clean, keeping that maintained is the key to maintaining the rest of the rest.
One of the things that were, didn't show up so great in the detail, our final plans will show up, but there is a note down in the plan view, is that we'll have a, sort of, a stake that notes sediment buildup and kind of gives a point of reference so that when it gets to a certain level, okay, now we know we have, you know, six inches or nine inches of sediment in the bottom, it's time to clean it out.
And the pavement's gonna be gone?
The pavement will be gone, yeah. And if you look, you look at the detail, there are also points sort of in between the cells where the perforated pipes that allow the stormwater to get down into the gravel can be sort of checked and cleaned out.
So aside from maintenance, this is generally a self-regulating system?
Correct, yeah.
Especially like the outflow? You said that that is self-regulating?
It is, yeah. It would be great to have somebody who sort of understands how it works so that, you know, if there's problems, can take care of quickly, because that's what happens a lot of times, kind of like the solar panels, if it just gets completely ignored, you know, no one even knows it's not functioning and the problem gets worse.
And people horsing around around it, or there's no safety concerns around this thing?
No, in general, the water level will be just below the soil level, and the berm will be, you know, about three feet high, so, you know, the largest of storms it might actually fill up, but that's gonna be pretty rare.
Like last night, this morning?
Probably would have some water in it this morning, yeah.
And these, these pipes here, how far above the ground?
Those, those are about a foot above.
Okay.
Yep.
And it's, what, four inch, three inch?
Those are actually eight inches perforated to get it...
Eight inch perforated?
Yeah, because that's, that's gonna help get it down into the substrate.
Okay. And the base will be a clay material?
So it's, essentially, we want to make sure that it's relatively impervious underneath, then two feet of stone, then a pea gravel, and then, then pretty much your, like, well-endy place.
Is it a clay base underneath this, like most of the soils around here?
That, yes, that's ideal.
Or is it ledge, or is it ledge underneath there?
Either would be fine.
Yeah, okay. I didn't know if somebody did a rope test or anything yet.
No, we haven't done any investigations.
Okay. All right. So you don't think if it was ledge as the impermeable layer, if that ledge had fissures or allowed water to go through it, then you would have to somehow seal that?
Perhaps, if it was extremely...
I mean, if you got down to ledge, you'd have to test ledge to make sure that indeed it wasn't.
We're essentially gonna be involved in construction, we'd have to make a call at that point if we wanted to do something.
Asserted that it wasn't permeable.
Yep.
Yep, Stone Environmental is, will still be under contract through the, through the construction, and it will be a process.
Peter?
Yep.
I think it's a great idea to have students involved. You should try to fill in the wetlands, we're gonna build a wetland on the campus. As far as capacity, have you, is there any consideration for future growth that would be able to, as far as its size, or is its size for what's...
It's sort of sized for our space. It does handle the water quality volume of the drainage area that's going to it. But we kind of maximize what we can fit in there, really. So if there's, I guess if it was more impervious, we probably wouldn't want to route it there, but at the same time, the systems flow through enough that I don't see it being a major problem.
Are there any more questions for Carrie, or Peter? To bring you up to date, this is not the first time this has come to the attention of the board committee. Last year, about a year ago, in April, the facilities committee, Todd and I and somebody else, I forgot.
Chance?
Chance, met in the middle of April because Hazen had to weigh in on the concept of having this project go. And we decided that we would authorize Joanne to express the, Hazen's approval of this project, their end of the project. And at the meeting, we figured we'd ask the board to ratify our recommendation at the next meeting, and I can't find that he ever asked the board to ratify. But that's, that's where we're at, here. The plan is a little more detailed than what we had the last time, and there you have it.
So you're looking for a motion to put it out to bid?
Well, they're looking for a motion to, that this board authorizes that to move forward and to sign the...
Sign our land.
To sign the authorization form.
Yeah.
Land on our authorization form.
Since I'm managing the bid, I don't know if I need...
We don't need...
Yeah.
They should, they don't need our permission.
I think it's really just for the grant to show that we have your documented approval to move forward.
So I have the approval document here. I think there's a copy of it in the digital meeting record for tonight, but I'll just leave it in case you haven't got to it. It's a landowner agreement, Hazen's the landowner. The Town Hardwick Stormwater Master Plan identified opportunities to mitigate water quality impacts and improve stormwater management. This agreement documents landowner permission to proceed with stormwater practice improvements to an existing system at Hazen Union School with installation scheduled for summer 2019. This agreement is between Caledonia County Natural Resources Conservation District and the landowner, Hazen Union School. The landlord, landowner is supportive of retrofitting the existing stormwater system and gives permission for the Caledonia County NRCD to proceed with implementation of this project. What is your pleasure?
Remote.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, we'll proceed to vote.
Is it just the chair that signs, or the whole board?
Just one person.
It's a really long line.
Motion to authorize the chair to sign.
All right, all right. The motion is to authorize the chair to sign this landowner agreement. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? And the motion carries. And I will sign it.
Thank you. Should I just continue to be in touch with John as the project proceeds, or...
I would say for now, yeah.
For now, just let me know if I, we could copy anybody else on the email.
Once I can hand it off, I'll be happy to hand it off.
Okay. And once we have the bid finalized, we'll have a schedule for construction.
And I'll, I'll put you in touch, I'll get you in touch with David, so I'll give you an email with David so that you can coordinate the student, maybe the student interaction?
Yeah, I can, I can reach out to Jay. I have his email.
Okay. So do you want to take that with you and you can just scan me a copy?
Yep, I will.
So that I can put it in there?
A shrink?
Thanks, Carrie.
Okay.
Hey, thanks a lot.
Have a good evening, guys.
If there's no objection, why don't we hear from Kaitlyn Bryant about the proposed European trip next year?
So I handed these out last week. Select course came and performed for some of the board members, but I will redistribute some of these.
How do you just present your things and, like, show them in your classes? I have no idea.
I don't know if people want to read it first, or if I should just begin, but I'm seeking to take the music department next year to Ireland for a seven-to-ten-day trip, still up in the air, pending your approval. So I'm seeking the board's approval to move forward with this project and begin to disseminate the information to the community and families. So the, the front sheet here is just a list of what's included in the trip. The big figure numbers, the cost per person, 2,150 plus airfare, which should round out about 3,000 to 3,200 per student. I think it's a fantastic opportunity on a bigger scale. I'm looking to broaden the offerings of our music department, it is my intention to hopefully start offering one of these trips every fourth year. Three, three years ago, I believe, we went to New York City, a domestic trip that we, I thought was a good first, was it two?
It was a freshman.
So, sorry, so...
Or do you count it as...
Yeah, it would be three.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I thought it was, we did three nights, it was a great, in my opinion, first step in the direction to doing something larger like this.
What are you looking for from the board tonight, just like a...
I just, I just want the approval to move forward this project. I don't have any sort of final numbers for us, and I won't be able to do that until I know how many students are going. So the more students we can get on this trip, the lower it's going to be per student. It's my intention and my philosophy to be as inclusive as we can with this and offer this to every student, and that's, that's gonna be a tall order. If all, and next year our numbers should be more, if all 40, next year hopefully 50 to 60 students in our program were to go, the cost goes, 40 would be, was 120-ish thousand dollars. So it's a big undertaking, and I'm kind of hoping to just jump in feet first. And we're not gonna raise that kind of money on cookie dough alone. It's my intention with whomever we hire as a band teacher to do a lot of grant writing, because I think that's how we're gonna get the bulk of this and at least subsidize the expense for families. But I think it's a great opportunity. The company is a local company based out of Burlington. There are some larger companies, and if, I don't know if anybody has experience traveling or having their, their children travel with, a company like EF offers phenomenal opportunities as well, but they always pair you with another school. And then I think it's, this company is reputable, they're insured, they're offering a great product, and they're local, and it would be just our school, setting our own standards, our own expectations, and not at the mercy of creating some sort of compromise, yes.
So they provide guides?
Yes.
They vet those guides?
Yes.
So they're all background-checked?
Great question. I don't have that answer.
And you said they provide their own insurance?
Yes.
Okay, so that's a couple of big hurdles already. The other one, the biggest thing I see is funding. This is gonna be, I mean, this is a hundred...
B2.
Hundred and five thousand dollars.
B2.
That's a huge piece. So that's the only pause I have at this point.
I see you're proposing to have two...
I see you're proposing to have two teachers. Are you, and we've done this in several ways, I've taken students overseas numerous occasions. I see you're proposing to have two teachers. Are you contemplating having parent chaperones? There are some pluses and some minuses to that. I've seen that. But typically, having, taking kids overseas, they recommend one adult for every 10 or 12 students, so you might want at least one additional adult if you're getting 35 students.
Have you reviewed the field trip or the guidelines?
I have.
And that, to that 35 to two conforms to that requirements that are outlined in there?
We can make that adjustment. This is a rough outline right now. It's, I tried to get as much as I could based on the numbers that I do have. This is what the company provided me with as an example, so we can make adjustments to this.
And is this during the spring? Is it during the summer? When is, when are you proposing? I didn't see that on here. It may be here.
So I believe the best timing to impact the students' academic...
Is it April?
Is not April, but J- April.
Okay. Oh.
I think that's the best time.
Yes, I agree with that. It may be a little more for transportation then than it would earlier in the year.
April would be the other option, doing an April vacation trip.
Well, because we got a vote on it, we put it on the next agenda to vote on, and he can answer the few questions that John brought up, plus, then we can have it for next meeting to ratify.
Talon, another question I have, and maybe this could be for the next meeting. I know we said come for the next meeting and the last meeting. But I'm wondering, because of the scope of this project is so big, if it might be helpful for the board to kind of see like milestones throughout the year where you're going to make, where the school's going to make decisions. So is there going to be a point where if you don't have more than 30 students signed up that you reevaluate the project? Or is there a point where this came up in the Mexico trip where you have to have insurance? Where is that kind of timeline? That might help us say, these are the decisions we need to make now, or we don't need to make any of these now because we're still in the feasibility process of it? And then that would, I think that would be helpful for some of us to just kind of see if this is a little over a year from now, what are we, what are we doing so we're not surprised at any point or that we're prepared if something changes? That, I don't want to, this is also really, there's a lot going on for you this time of year, too. But if it's possible to do like a very simple kind of timeline or that would, I think, would be helpful, I don't know, for the board members.
That's what, so when we did New York, that's exactly what we did.
Okay.
So you're looking for kind of a breakdown of, I guess, a timeline of making a final decision on whether we're going or not, and a breakdown of the cost for families?
Yeah.
Can you do that?
That would be awesome.
All right, well, Todd, I think that's a good suggestion. Let's warn this item for action at the next meeting. Please bring your questions about the trip for Talon, if you can make it to the next meeting. And if we have more questions, then probably we'll be in positions to take action.
So I'm just thinking through, June 20th is a carousel meeting. They're going to be really short meetings because of the ESU board meeting.
That's right. And then there is...
No meeting in July.
No meeting in July.
So if Talon's asking for the board's permission to move, just investigate the trip further? That's about it?
I would like, it's my intention, I would like to let families know, to at least give them a year of planning and saving to go. And so I think that the plan makes sense for the 20th, and ideally, we could have, I could have been here maybe a month earlier, but it would be, I think, ideal if I could at least say, hey, we're thinking of doing this to families, so they would at least have that seed planted if they would like to do it.
And I'm not saying no for the 20th, I'm just, I just want you to be cognizant as you think about your next agenda for the 20th, just don't try to pack it full because you don't have a lot of time as the individual boards.
It would be too quick of us to say, go ahead and see how much interest there is out there tonight. We couldn't do that tonight.
Well, I think Talon could come, he could start inquiring now and come report back to you on the 20th.
I don't think there's any negativity on it, but the vote on it, we need to...
I understand.
So I think you can still do it on the 20th, I just want you to all be cognizant of not trying to pack the 20th too heavy.
I think that sounds like a good idea. So let's, I'll contact Taylor and make sure she puts this item on for the 20th.
So Talon, if you could get us that information in advance of the meeting, then we can make the decision.
Is there, I'm sorry, I want to write this down. Is there, what's the best way to communicate with the board?
There's an email list.
There's an email group, Hazen Board.
Hazen Board. Hazen Board.
I mean, it's like, is it Hazen or is it HJZ?
I don't remember. You just type in Hazen Board and...
Oh, HUS Board.
HUS Board. You start typing Hazen Board in the email and they'll find it. I'm like, do I have something?
He will. You will.
Just send you, God. Just don't delete it, that's all. He's going to email it, he's going to email it to you. I understand posting stamps.
That would involve having to open the email.
He does open it, but then he deletes them. That's why he couldn't find the last agenda. Gives you somebody to make fun of, so it would feel good.
Last meeting, you were here, you did it to me.
It's literally a renaissance, man.
Talon, thank you very much. That's a great idea.
I can handset type and make paper, yes.
I don't know if anybody else did the CD trip, but a buddy of mine and I went in our senior year to Ireland and England, and we had a great time.
I would love to go to Ireland.
Hitchhiking.
You do? We won't be doing that, so.
Right. Very well, thank you, Talon.
Thank you. And just to be clear, so I should hold on spreading the information to families?
Well, if you could...
I would just gauge some interest.
Gauge interest.
Absolutely.
Yeah, don't commit to anything which is gauge interest. You say the board is curious to know.
Introduce it, we're talking about it, is there interest?
There's too many things about it.
Then you can come to us and say...
Like every time the music department's going anywhere, someone calls that course.
And we need numbers, wants it back. Okay?
I'll admit to a little concern about introducing and getting everything going in just a year. Sometimes these things are done over two years.
Yes.
You may have enough organization with the band and chorus to be able to get it done in a year, but that's, that's an initial concern that I have, not a concern about going, just about trying to get everything together in 13 months.
The first time, I think, is going to be by far the hardest, like I said. It's my intention to expand our curriculum.
Sure, great, great.
Broaden it. So hopefully, we can do this and tell families every fourth year, start saving, and you can do this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very well. I think we're back to regular order now, which brings us to...
Lisa Cathcart also made...
Oh, I'm sorry. There you go.
You didn't recognize because it's not my normal behavior, being quiet so long.
We better, we better hear from Head Start then.
You guys want to go for a ride?
A ride? Where to?
To my center.
To your, to your Head Start Center?
Yeah.
Is that the one in the Grange now?
No, it's the one in the basement of the Masonic Temple, right down the road.
Oh, the Masonic.
I just feel like I'm a hands-on learner, and if you had a visual and were actually in the space, you might have a better idea of exactly what we are still interested in.
The last we heard of this was that Joanne was talking with, I think, the executive staff. It had started in Newport, I believe, and there was some thought that a more appropriate place, I don't think there's been any fine decision, but a more appropriate place for the program, or at least a more, another place to look for citing it, would be Hardwick Elementary. Have you heard anything about that at all?
She showed us the Little Red Schoolhouse, which would barely contain my classroom, much less office space and our early Head Start, and it's, we are always and still are interested in being here. We got an email from Joanne saying that this was off the table. So I'm a horse's mouth kind of person, and I came to ask you if that is in fact true, if there's something I can answer for you, but I think it would be great if we went down to the center and you could just see exactly how much space we're talking about and what we're talking about.
I haven't heard that it's, it's off the table.
No, that's what she sent us.
That's what she sent you?
She sent us an email. She sent my manager an email saying it is off the table.
Huh, well, maybe that's, that's not my recollection, though I could be mistaken.
Did you get a copy, too?
I beg your pardon?
Did she send it to you as well?
I don't recall. Did anybody else get an email like that?
I saw it. I don't get school board emails, so...
Neither do I. What did you see?
I saw something saying that Hardwick Elementary was a much more appropriate place. That's what I saw in a note from Joanne a few days ago.
So I can read it, if that would be helpful?
Well, she, then she called my manager and said, it's off, it's off the table.
So we received an email on April 22nd saying, I had a meeting with the Head Start folks, and they are not going to be looking at Hazen as their site. In our discussions, they informed me that they would really like to be at Hardwick Elementary School. I've spoken with Pat Pennick, and he is very interested. He and the Head Start folks will be scheduling a meeting with intent of building a combined program at the school. And so that's, that's all we got, Lisa.
Yeah, we have never taken this off the table.
You know, now I do remember that. And I must say, I mean, I don't know exactly what's going on here, but we're...
That's why I'm here.
We're dealing with, I think the administration is dealing with the Newport office, which is an appropriate place to get started.
Absolutely.
And I think, I hope I'm not talking out of turn here, but I think maybe, and Newport is your head office, right?
Katie, Katie also says this is not off the table.
All right.
So until we find out if it's on the table or off the table, would it be beneficial for you folks to come down and look at our space and see exactly what we're talking about?
I've been in there.
You have, fun times. You, I know, have been in there. Kaylee, I know you have been in there. We have regular-sized toilets. We have a very small classroom, a very small playground. We have five, six people in one small, long stretch of an office. There's no private place to have a conversation with parents. We have our own kitchen. We're kind of an encapsule, you know, we're just like our own little capsule. We would have our own cook, our own kitchen, our own, the only time we might be outside with the population here would be if we were in the playground or going on the trails.
All right, well, I think, I gather there's some, well, I'm a little bit confused about where this is going. So if your head office is still open to this premises as a location, then...
It was my understanding that the conversation that Joanne's had with them in Newport is that they're not, the information that I got from Joanne was they were not okay with it, really okay with it being up here. They would prefer it to be...
The Head Start organization was not happy with it being at Hazen?
At Hazen.
We would prefer it to be here.
They would prefer it to be at Hardwick Elementary.
They would prefer it to be at Hardwick Elementary?
Yes. Those are the conversations that I've had with Joanne.
All right, so it seems like there's a difference of opinion, and we don't know really which way the wind is blowing.
I understand.
May I ask you to communicate with your home office and confirm or...
Yeah.
Exactly what the position of your home office is with respect to the availability?
I understand. As a past member of this board, I would be doing the same thing. And I understand totally. So yes, I will be happy to go do that. Here's my question for you. Are you folks still interested if that is in fact the case?
I'll speak for myself and not for the board, but I would be interested. But there's, of course, a lot of logistical planning...
Absolutely.
...to, to look at. So the concept, the idea, yes. Can it work? That's way down the line, and I guess we can cross that bridge when we come to it.
As I recall, the earlier discussion, there was discussion about potentially a separate access to building, separation from, et cetera.
Right. Separate food service and...
Various issues like that that will take some navigating to get by.
Sure.
There was also discussion about surveying the students to see what they thought.
Different ages in the same building.
To see what, no, to see what the Hazen students thought about having the preschool age students in their building.
I also, I also wonder if, I think, in terms of timing, Lisa, for the various transitions that are happening, happening in the office, I wonder if it makes sense to, I know you guys are in a time crunch, but with Adam coming in in July, I feel like that should be a conversation with our new superintendent and building from there versus, I don't know how the board feels about that. And then also that would give, David, I know you talked a little bit about this with Jeff, but we're also, our facilities manager is transitioning, too, and that would be a key stakeholder or partner in this. So I wonder if it makes them, it would be more productive to, Lisa, if you were to talk to Head Start and really figure out what the needs are, and then when we come back in August, hopefully, we'll have a facilities manager and also a new superintendent, and so that would be including those two folks in the conversation, which I think would be important. I don't know if that...
As far as I know, this is still an ongoing discussion, right? So I think there can be progress even before our next formal meeting in August if Head Start wanted to be there.
Yeah.
But for now, I think the fundamental problem here is a communications problem, I think. So if we nip that one in the bud, then we have a pretty clear path in front of us, I would say.
If somebody wants to give me their cell phone number, I'll have her call you.
I think...
Should be communicating with Joanne.
Yeah, and...
I didn't hear what you said, I'm so sorry.
Have to go to your central office.
Okay.
Just, just so that there's, there's not a, like, a multi-headed Hydra here.
No, no, I was going to have my director call a member of the board just to confirm that, yes.
The communication needs to filter through central office.
Okay.
As far as we know, it's an ongoing project.
Okay.
And there's no, there's a, there's a feeling that it might be appropriate at Hardwick Elementary, but that's, that's not to say that plans could change and it could come back here.
Well, the Little Red Schoolhouse is not going to cut, not going to cut it. It has no office space, and as far as I know, I don't, I've been told there is no space at the elementary school, really. So I don't know if you folks have empty rooms here, but I just came to keep the conversation alive.
Right, and thank you for that. If you weren't here, we wouldn't know that there's seemingly a disconnect.
Yeah, there is definitely, because that's why I came, to find out, were you folks not interested anymore? Because we still are.
No, we'll, we'll stay out of the logistical planning until...
I'll do that, too. I'll go, I told you before, I'm a little Indian, but I'm a little Indian who sticks her neck on the chopping block all the time to move things forward.
Okay, no chopping this time.
Don't chop me tonight. Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
But I'm still willing to take you down there right now and look at this space so you have a vision.
Wasn't Head Start in there many, many years ago?
We've been there 30 years. We've been actually, we've actually been there 35 years in the, in that basement.
How about the red schoolhouse?
It was the kindergarten.
That was a kindergarten?
It was a hack, it was one's classroom.
There's no, yeah.
All right.
It was Kathleen Sampson's kindergarten room.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, good night, have a nice fourth meeting.
Good night.
Good night. All right. Now it looks like we're back to regular order unless I'm wrong again, and that brings us to the principal's incidental report. David?
Okay, great, thank you. So I sent out the report, I highlighted a couple of things I thought worth looking at, the service week aspect, testing week, which we just finished up here, which was required and undertaking. And since I sent that out to you, I got... And since I sent that out to you, I got some feedback from Reeve. Reeve Bassam, who has been an incredible community partner in many things, but really went above and beyond in this particular effort to really set this whole thing in motion. And without her, we never could have done this. I put some feedback from her into the principal's report, but I guess that once it goes into the notes, it becomes no longer a Google Doc that moves or something. So I thought I would just share it with you. I thought it would just go right in. But Reeve says, "Just wanted to share my thanks and appreciation for all the energy, flexibility, coordination, and collaboration that went into last week. From the kitchen, putting on a special lunch on Friday, Nurse Betty managing the medical logistics of dozens of simultaneous field trips, teachers supporting students through the intensity of a week of testing, TSA advisors navigating my crazy spreadsheet to help their students know where to go for projects, students and adults working together in all kinds of weather." It was snowing on Monday morning. Administrators working behind the scenes to respond to moving, many moving parts and pieces. Students bringing so much positive and productive energy out into the community, and the list goes on. So she quotes from some of the hosts. "Just wanted to say that this Service Week is my favorite week of our year here. I love having Hazen students. They are wonderful and dedicated and awesome. I just really appreciated the students' willingness to take on everything I threw at them. As usual, they got much more done than I had ever anticipated. Thanks so much for making this happen." An interesting thing, there were several incidences apparently where student internships and job shadowing opportunities emerged from different experiences that students had the week, during the week. And this was a quote from a student, said, "That place was amazing. It was so inspiring to be there." And that was a student reflecting on their work at Heartbeat. There were two groups of students that went to Heartbeat and I was with one of them the second day. And I would agree with them. That was a pretty amazing experience for us to be there and realize what that place is and how much it's really an alternative peek at life when people think differently about how to organize things about life. I mentioned in the report the partners in learning breakfast, which was an awesome event that many of you were at, but that was really cool. We do have a few staffing changes. Really happy with the new eighth grade math teacher that we have onboard. We're still looking for a music band director. Still wrapping up the final pieces of our facilities manager. And recently looking for a new global studies teacher. Lots of planning has been up and about for J-term. We're moving towards that really quickly. And graduation in the end of the school year will be upon us before you know it. And the last thing that I mentioned in my incidences report was the article that Doug wrote in the Gazette about concerns that students from our LGBTQ community have been living under. So for any of us who have been here at Hazen, this is not really a surprise about the difficulty that these students face in life. It's difficult in the world for these folks and we are committed and dedicated towards doing whatever we can to move this place to a place that is caring and attentive and loving of all people. So we have some work to do with that in a lot of different areas. So that was the last thing I mentioned. And the only other thing that I want to mention is that thanks to Andrew, we have kind of wrapped up our relationship with the folks that we formed a partnership with during the pledge activities. And a group of folks got together and donated a whole set of new flags to our building. Two of them are sitting right here in this space right now and also many of them in the classrooms. And that was the American Legion Post Number Seven, the Legion Riders, the Sons of American Legion, and the Ladies Auxiliary of Post Number Seven. So we are all grateful and indebted to these folks for their support of the school and their interest in the school community, so. We were able to get it done even with a major glitch at the last minute. I was so proud. Andrew had asked me how to get into the building on a Saturday and I forgot him my key card so he could get in and we came into the building with all these flags and all the classrooms' doors were locked. But Andrew Meyer was not one to let a locked door stand in his way.
Because his experience as a high school student.
I remember hiding a set of keys years ago. So you could see this, and the flags are all in place. So, yeah, we put in several, and it was a group of people who did it and they felt good about it, so. So that's more.
Good. So that's it for me and I will entertain any questions anybody has. Any questions for David?
Quick question. On the facilities manager, where was, where was that posted? Is that description still out and if it is?
It's posted on school, and it also goes out, when we do that, it goes out to Indeed.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Indeed is actually a wider.
Yeah.
It just redirects them back to a school spring to apply.
And is that, I haven't seen the description, but is that encompassing sort of where we're trying to go as a school and a description of, was that included in the description?
The job description? It's the current job description and what it is. Do you have basic core functions that someone needs to do?
Do you want me to see if I can bring that up to share with you?
Jeff's leaving in July, right? So the idea would be we'd have someone in here before that time or that transition.
That's the whole.
Yeah. No, I was just thinking, we look at facilities as we think about where we're going and what we're trying to do, how that, so I assume it's written into the description about the vision of the school and school. We talked about it at one point. I didn't know if that was incorporated into the, and are we, is it still, is it still open?
No. No, it was open for a month.
Right. Move, link them.
Any more questions for David on that report?
Oh, just a quick update on the whole fundraising thing. The, I'm not sure from last time, but the Mexico trip did meet their $14,000 goal. They did raise all their funds. So and then you think about trips and whether or not we can maybe set up a foundation of some sign that was a reinvesting in opportunities that can stimulate and support these trips because I think they're gonna, they're gonna keep coming and funding them will always be an issue.
Yeah, just to add to that, Andrew, I feel like the Mexico trip built a lot of community support and interest. So rather than having, say, Talon, for example, starting fresh, like building on those relationships that were made, I think would be really smart.
Can I just say one thing about the Mexico City trip? Just gonna throw it out there. This has been, the amount of money that's been spent though, we just need to be, Congress said that these kids could have gone on a guided trip. And that was a big conversation upfront that we didn't want to pay the amount of money for a guided trip. These kids could have gone on a guided trip, the amount of money we paid.
Which is just to say that a guided trip is not a bad idea looking forward.
I would have probably got a few less gray hairs.
Which is what Alan has proposed.
Yes, yes, that's what I asked. I think that's one of our takeaways from this whole experience is we had, you know, we had to go get that specialized insurance. We had to jump through some extra hoops as far as background checks and, you know, coordinating travel and stuff that we wouldn't have to do if we went through a guided service because they would take care of it and it would just be us writing the check. And that's a lot simpler and we can, we know what our commitment is upfront and there's none of this always coming back, oh, we need this additional thing, there's this one other piece. It's a lot easier for parents to plan, it's a lot easier for boards to plan for, it's just, it makes life simpler.
And when there are some of the questions, there's a place to go to get a lot of the answers.
Yeah.
It really is.
And I think it's notable that this is not a field trip or a sightseeing trip, it's an immersion.
Yes.
Where they're actually, so I don't, if they decided that they wanted to have a guided tour through the city, that would have been not good.
No, and there are very guided, there are guided trips, they do do very detailed, deep immersion trips. There are, they're out there.
And I think also each country, each project, each outcome, each initiative that a teacher has may not be fulfilled by a guided component of it.
Well, I mean, I think we have a bigger conversation about, do we want to thwart creativity among teachers who might want to create a different kind of experience and have those conversations, but be really clear about what the bottom line is for us in terms of safety and security and that experience. And obviously, if someone else can do it, that's great, but I don't think we want to universally say if some teacher comes up with some amazing experience for our kids that we can't find a way to encourage that to happen.
And I'm not saying that at all. I'm not saying that at all, but I'm just saying, an immersion Spanish trip, there are a lot of guided services that give you immersion Spanish trips.
Right. I get that, but I think we also just need to not be so, you need to be careful that we also, you know, want to be responsible, but also encouraging of teachers who might have ideas about ways to create experiences for our kids.
But, and the only thing I'm gonna push back on, and I'm respectfully pushing back here, is you have a liability insurance plan right now that you have a huge deductible on. God forbid something happens to one of those kids, this board is on the hook for that. I'm not gonna say, I'm not saying anything is, but if something happens on one of these trips, they're responsible to make sure that these kids get back safe. Their insurance is responsible for it. This board is not taking that liability onto its taxpayers. That's all I'm saying. That's a huge liability.
And that goes into, that then goes into our policy about what are the parameters around a trip. And we didn't have that or it wasn't in, so we now have to go back and review our trip policy.
I'm saying, we've learned a lot through this process and we just need to be able to take this learning and...
Mr. Policy? It may be.
Mr. Policy. That's actually quite funny.
Or we, we know how this is jolly, truly, these policies. Maybe it's time to look at that in light of this trip and really figure out how to do it so that we don't create negative...
The only reason I said that is because that was one of the big pushes when we first started this conversation was we didn't want to do a guided trip because it costs so much money and we could do it this a whole lot cheaper. Well, we're not doing this a whole lot cheaper.
Right.
That was one of the big takeaways for this board is to go this route was we were gonna save a lot of money and we didn't save a lot of money.
So next year when the trip goes to Syria?
Right.
Working refugee camps? Hey, just kidding. I just wanted to see how close you were to a foreigner.
I just saw three hairs gray. Right there in front of us.
Pretty close. Sightseeing in a Gaza Strip?
These are all important considerations of whether, you know, a canned trip is okay, whether they can be customized, the various cost benefits. These are things we're gonna have to consider or the organizers and we will have to consider after every trip. So there are, this was a good experience, a very good experience.
I think we've learned a lot.
Five.
I think we've learned a lot through this process.
It would be great to have, when the trip is done, to have the teachers who helped organize it. If we have a meeting, to invite them, talk about what worked and what didn't work, to help inform the policy, I think would be really helpful.
Agreed, agreed. Bringing us back to the principal's report, any other questions, comments for David on that? If they're not, we can move on to the superintendent's incidental report, which is in the digital meeting file. Self-explanatory, I think.
Does anybody have any questions?
If there are none, we can move on to item five, discussion items. And the first is the SU Board report out. There was the usual routine business at the SU Board, the last SU Board meeting. There was also a very instructive opportunity for public comment at that meeting and that centered on parents reporting their children's experience and at the school with incidents of racism. And the kids weren't there, it was a report from the parents. And it was, personally for me, it was quite eye-opening. The kind of things that these kids are subjected to is pretty astonishing to hear. And it's even more astonishing because I don't think kids are born with these kinds of biases. They learn them from somewhere and it's up to the schools these days to tackle that and to try to get across, I think, that some characteristics like color of the skin and maybe even sexual orientation do not make one subhuman, that they are actually just different from you and still deserving of respect. And we had quite, quite a briefing from the parents. And at the end of that, Joanne acknowledged to the parents, she apologized that the SU was, didn't come up to the standards of vigilance about tackling this behavior and meeting it head-on. And vowed that the SU and the individual schools would do much better in the future. And there's certainly the motivation for that after hearing those comments. Other than that, the minutes of the board meeting are in the OSSU, under the OSSU tab on the drive. They're accessible if you want to get a drift of the more routine business that occurred. But I must say that was quite an important meeting for me personally. I think a lot of people were surprised to hear at how not unusual it was for students to, certain students to face incidents of blatant racism, not only from other students, but from the adults involved as well. Some staff and others. And it certainly raised the question of what's, what's been termed, I think it's like an unconscious bias, which, which is a really important thing that has to be recognized by people. It reminds me, if I may stray for a moment, of wandering into the...
No.
The mobile phone outfit there in Montpelier. the mobile phone outfit there in Montpelier. And, and people were busy, and then there was this salesman, it was this black guy, went up to him and talked to him after a while. And at the end of our discussion, he said, "Thanks for talking to me." And I said, huh? And he said, "No, really. I mean, people come up here, they see all the white salesmen occupied, they look at me, and then you see this look of panic on their face, that they're gonna have to deal with a salesman who has black skin." And, you know, I thought, yep, 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 yep. It's kind of like an unconscious bias if, if you don't have any black friends or haven't had, you know, a chance to make a, get a personal relationship with somebody. That kind of attitude, I think, is, is easier to just pass unchallenged in your own head. So, it sounds to me like the administration and the staff of the schools are alert now, more than ever, to this problem and are serious about tackling it.
Couldn't you speak to that?
Yeah, I, I just want to say that I hope everybody realizes that this is a long-term commitment. There are, there's lots of work to be done on this, because I mentioned earlier the LGBTQ community, but it's for many communities who suffer from this, and kids of color are definitely part of this. And we're digging in for the long haul. This is gonna be many years of commitment to try and make sure that this, our schools are safe, places where everyone can be educated. So this isn't just about, you know, finding some curriculum somewhere that we can run our, through our community, and all will be well.
You got bullying, you got special needs as well. I mean, I've gone through that with my son in his, in his special needs, so.
And it's, it's gonna be a long process of all of us looking deeply into ourselves and being willing to make some changes, both personally and institutionally.
And ripple it back the other way. Out to where?
Out to the community, yeah, absolutely.
You gotta ripple that way, because it's coming in from the community.
Well, and I think we, as a board, need to also own, what is it that we do? And how do we conduct business that?
Or don't do.
Or don't do, right. Like, it's not just other people, it's a sort of system of all of us of how do we, how do we approach, how do we talk about policies, how do we talk about things as a board?
So I'll just mention that there is a first conference, student world conference of racism in Vermont Schools that's happening in Randolph, a week and a half. And they had spots available for five students from each of the schools to, uh, and Hazen had fifteen kids that wanted to go, so I asked them if we could bring fifteen kids, and they were like, "Sure, bring fifteen kids." So I'm hoping that we're gonna be able to do that and look for every opportunity we can to move this work forward.
It's next Friday?
It's about Wednesday, the twenty-ninth.
Next Wednesday.
Some of the board should go. Can you do that?
Yeah, we're actually looking for another driver, so if anyone.
Is Mary taking kids down? Do you know that? We should connect, because if we have an opportunity to take a bus down, we can grab the two schools and put them on a bus.
Yes, I don't know, I haven't even spoken with her about it. We, yeah, so that's, that's worth.
Worth having a conversation.
Randolph on the twenty, what, twenty-nine?
Twenty-nine.
What time? Wednesday? Oh, no, it's a morning, too, or something like that. Yeah. There's posters around it by the cafeteria.
As long as you bring a pumpkin roll. The kids are gonna be hungry on the ride down, they, they would love a pumpkin roll.
There's a sexist approach.
They'll be very happy. There's nothing sexist about that. You made her look at pumpkin rolls.
She's your defense, she's improving.
I bake in my house.
That's the point, I think, isn't it?
Three more gray hairs.
Man, I don't get any more brownies. Look at that. Took them away. I got a demerit.
Speaking of gray hairs, the next item on the agenda is tax anticipation notes.
Why is that bad? So, tonight is just a discussion. You'll be getting your tax anticipation note and signing it on June twentieth, so. Tonight is just for discussion. So we put them out to bid to all three banks. Oddly enough, the first two that we put out, only two banks bid on, and the last ones, all the banks bid on, so I'm not quite sure what that's all about, but. For Hazen, Union Bank put out two options. Community National, or Community Bank NA put out two op, or one option, and Community National Bank put out two options. Community National Bank put out option one, which is an ICS, so if wanted to have an ICS account with them, which would basically be like your operating account you have with Union Bank, they would do that at 2.8% interest. Or they would offer you a straight line of credit for 2.5% interest. Community Bank NA would just offer a straight line of interest for Hazen at 3.1% interest. Then we have Union Bank's options. Union Bank should, Union Bank would opt, offer a straight line of credit for 2.5% or your ICS, which is what we do every year, at 2.45%. So the recommendation would be to go with Union Bank, that's what we've been doing right along. And have an ICS option.
Sounds like a new brainer.
Yes.
And I don't get this stuff very easily, so.
This is just for information for you guys. The one that I'm gonna bring to you to sign will be the one for your ICS option, because that's gonna save you the most money.
At 2.45.
Yeah, because you actually make money on that one with them, because you earn interest on it over the course of the year.
Can we take a larger one and arbitrage it?
Because actual, the, the, the actual larger one with Community Bank NA, they just off, that's just a straight line of credit. 3.1% interest. So you'll actually make money on your ICS option at Union Bank, because the interest you earn will actually be more than the interest you'll pay, based on the way you use the money. So, that's the one I'll bring to you on the twentieth, for you to approve and sign at that board meeting.
Just prove it on the agenda.
It's already gonna be on your agenda.
Any more questions about arbitrage and heady financial transactions? If not, we'll go with the next item, which is a debriefing of the May thirteenth meeting. There were a couple of board members, you may recall that there was a special board meeting for teachers and staff and faculty to advise board of recent accomplishments and achievements. Does someone, I was there, but I'm talking too much tonight, does somebody else who was there want to debrief the rest?
I think you took notes, though.
I did, and, and they went out today.
Taylor said they were very timely and very well done.
Oh, really? I thought it was one day late, so I'll take that.
Well, she said they were very timely for you.
Well, there they are.
Nice timing, sir.
But I have to tell you, that, that select chorus, oh my god, it's just unbelievable.
Yeah, kudos to you.
No, it's fine. We're great. It's okay. So, I, I thought it was a really great, so we started, do you wanna blow back a little, Steve? But the meeting started with a wonderful performance by the chorus, who also then ran the NHS ceremony. So it was a busy night. And then we heard from a variety of teachers about all kinds of different things. I think it was an amazing experience to build trust and to get the school board and, I mean, maybe even David, you learned some things about what's going on, that, and we all left really inspired. And I hope, and also talked a little bit about how we could continue to provide opportunities for teachers and faculty to do that next year as well. So that was also really exciting. And it seems like carving out time during the day so that way all faculty could be there. That seems like a lot, but I'm sure it's something we could figure out. And then also having, I think having the students there too was really amazing as well. So I left feeling really inspired and excited to figure out ways that we can continue to do that.
They also suggested coming to a faculty meeting, so that more faculty would be there, which I think makes good sense.
But then the presenter package, they thought the way we've done this past one would make more sense, if they were coming in with a, you know, a twenty-minute presentation. So you're not listening to the whole staff, you're listening to two or three, so there was ideas kicked around.
Yeah, we talked about having different departments doing presentations at different school board meetings throughout the year. And we could schedule that out far enough in advance, that maybe it's not every school board meeting, but it's every other, something like that. It was a great idea.
I just want to comment that teachers weren't notified about the school board meeting until Monday morning. So none of the teachers knew about it until they got an email Monday morning saying, hey, this thing is happening. So that's why some of the teachers felt kind of like last minute. I told Bryant about this opportunity a month before when he announced at the April meeting, because I knew that he was wanting to do something like this, and he was a perfect opportunity. I might as well tell him so he can prepare for it. So that's why we were all together, but, yeah.
So the question is, should we put that invitation out, or should it come from David?
I think we just did. Whoever does it, does it earlier.
Right, and that it's coordinated.
I like the department thing, too.
Right.
Block by block.
Sounds like we have a failure to communicate.
Yes, quite, quite. I know we set the meeting a few weeks before. And then I apologize, I must have spaced out, I did space out on it. And we didn't even think of how we were going to contact, other than through the grapevine and scuttlebutt.
So, Will, I think it was on me, Steve, I appreciate your responsibility for it, but I think I owe this one, too.
Well, maybe we can go out and misrate together.
I have a question. I don't know if anyone reached out to teachers who did come to it. It might be worth just an email saying thank you, especially with the short notice. I think they put together really great presentations and talking points. So just, just a thank you for taking the time to do that would be.
That's a good idea. All right, too bad you missed it if you weren't there. The next, the next item on the, on the agenda is a follow-up on the Craftsbury connection, which sounds like a great title for a movie.
It's about drug dealing in Craftsbury. No, that's the French connection. So it's happening on the thirtieth, just Thursday night. We warned it, and we warned it to my house because Mary Lou was trying to figure out where to have it, and they didn't think that the Craftsbury General Store would have a large enough space. They were concerned about black flies and mosquitoes, as a particular black slime mosquito problem in Craftsbury. So.
There can be, it's a lot of stuff.
Sort of buzzing around about it, and then Joanne contacted me and said, "I have to warn it, and I need to have a place." So I said, "Just put it at my house." So it's at my house next Thursday. I thought I'd just go get some pizzas, and we could do salad, if y'all want to bring a drink, and I let Mary Lou know. You guys too. Yes, of course, you guys.
What time is it?
It's six.
It's plenty of time to debrief after the wedding.
Everybody's welcome. It's public meeting.
It's a public meeting. There are some Craftsbury families, actually, that were thinking about coming. Because they are, to that email we got from Joanne about choice.
So you have two students, one.
But before we get into that, I just want to say there might be parents coming. And I let these folks know that this was just gonna be an informal, there was no agenda. We'd love to hear from them, but that if they had issues that they wanted to talk about, that's fine. But not to be disappointed if we're just sitting around schmoozing around pizza and drinks and talking about how great we all think each other is. Sound better in my head, I said it, but.
So it's not gonna be like the Monday, the meeting we had last Monday?
No, probably not. I think we're, we're not, there's no agenda.
This is a lot more informal. This is more for you guys to get together and begin a dialogue.
Are there policies around the types of beverages, beverages that we should use? We can email about it.
No, there's no policy around it. You're adults.
What's a policy at Amy's house? That's what we need to know.
No pigs' blood.
Well, then I'm not.
So is that okay? The other option was getting you to do the beans.
Mary go.
Would Mary do the beans, bro? Really? And I may change out. If she'll do the beans, we can arrange around that. You might have to ask her before we commit her.
I think she'll do it. It does, she can do it before she goes to work, and then all I gotta do is grab them, take them down.
Perfect, okay.
I don't know how long I'll linger. I gotta find, make sure somebody's there for Lily, because she's working, so.
Is that even grilling?
Probably will grill something, yeah.
All right, there you have it, thirtieth at.
Grill pumpkin roll. Pumpkin roll, oh, the pumpkin roll.
Grill pumpkin roll?
Grill pumpkin roll.
B Y O P R.
So, back to the Craftsbury thing. So there are a couple of students, one Hazen student, one Craftsbury student, that would potentially like to flip next year. The nice thing about this is your tuition rates are identical next year. So there is no adverse impacts to either board. So this comes down to, what's the pleasure of the board? You have to take into consideration, there are some factors to consider, like the Craftsbury student is either a freshman or a sophomore. And I think the Hazen student's a senior, David. You know who this student is? I don't either. I don't know who this student is.
So there's transportation.
No, I think they've got transportation figured out.
Because how long they'll be in the school.
It's how long they'll be in the school, so.
So I have another question, hypothetically. What if word got out and people just said, oh, I want to go to the other school?
This is another conversation you need to have, because there's always been a conversation, could we offer choice among the two high schools? If so, what would that cap be? And then there was always the difference in the tuition rates. And that's always been an obstacle, because Craftsbury's tuition and Hazen's tuition has always been different. Very nice tuition. Now they're not. So you could, and I think this is something you all need to talk about on the thirtieth. Spend some time just kicking the can. You don't have to make a decision, but you know, what if we were to offer four slots, five slots? Where kids could go back and forth. And, you know, tell them straight up, we're not transporting you. You guys need to figure that out on your own. You're.
There's already a bus that makes a circuit, isn't there?
Not fully, I don't think.
It goes to the gas station.
So previously, would families have to pay?
Pay tuition, yeah. And one of the, the Hardwick student that's
Has been paying tuition for a couple of years.
Has been paying tuition for a couple of years at Craftsbury. But I guess situations changed, they can't, can no longer afford to, so they're gonna have to come back to Hazen. Family situation or something, I don't know what the whole dynamic is, don't care to know, don't need to know. But that was the ask, so.
There's a history of this in the district. I mean, Greensboro and Hardwick Elementary, for a number of years, had similar situations with kids going in the opposite directions.
So what would it look like if that was approved for next year, but then the following year? year?
It would have no impact on the ADM where it helps.
You wouldn't be able to provide that to the Crasberry student for more than.
Well, so this is, this is the deal. So the sending town keeps their ADM. So it would work like basically like high school choice. So pre, or the Woduski Valley High School Choice, you keep your ADM. So the Crasberry student is still a Crasberry student, they still get funding through the state mechanism for that student. Hazen student's still a Hazen student, Hazen still gets funding for that student. So there's no money exchange. So it's just basically, we're allowing students to go and, for the next year.
And then beyond that.
Well, beyond that, you'd have to have a conversation because if you're gonna commit to allowing a student go, you really have to commit to allow them to finish their education there. You can't say, you can go this year, but you can't go next year. That's really not fair to the student.
And then a cap on the number of students.
Right. If you were to discuss on a bigger scale, could we offer high school choice within our district, what that cap might be? I don't know. I mean, I mean, start small, see what the interest level would be. I don't know. That's something the boards begin to discuss and feel out their comfort level and what they feel would be acceptable.
And would always have to be an even switch?
That's for you guys to figure out.
That, that's, this is just putting it on the table.
Putting it on the table to have a discussion. That's, that's one of the things that have to come up in discussion.
So this has been an ongoing practice, if I understand correctly?
I don't think it's really been an ongoing practice between Crasberry and Hazen. I think it's been an ongoing practice, there's extenuating circumstances that have happened within the district at the elementary level, yes, where we've had students go to different schools.
We've had students from Crasberry come down and do like the music program.
Right, yes.
Or they come to do sports.
We have, we have a number of students at Crasberry who come to Hazen for the sports teams.
Not in the music department recently, though. We've had homeschool kids come in.
Well, pre-game for the music.
But I know we had, Crasberry sent students down to play basketball this season.
And softball.
And softball, well, not softball. Softball's playing peoples. Hazen softball's playing peoples. But I don't know if, if they're looking at soccer this fall, because I don't know.
Soccer, definitely.
Yeah, I don't know if Crasberry's gonna have enough girls to field a team, so I think they're looking at maybe something in soccer, too. So there's, there's a partnership already established here and something I think that would serve both boards very well if we could expand upon.
So up to now, at least at the, at the high school exchange level, it was like piecemeal or some activity?
It's, yeah, it's been programmatic piecemeal. It hasn't been, this student would like to go to Hazen, or this student would like to go to Crasberry. There haven't been those full-on discussions.
And in the elementary school level, have there been exchanges permitted for non-extenuating circumstances? I mean, just like this, this situation.
No, no, I don't. I think that all of the elementary school exchanges have been for extenuating circumstances. But now that I say that, I'm sure that somebody can think of one at some point that wasn't, but any that I can think of have resulted because of some extenuating circumstance. There hasn't been just because.
Well, before we take action on this, obviously Todd will remind us that we need to warn for the meeting. But what, and we do have, we do have some background baggage here. I think our, our high school exchange is fourteen. Every year, we approve a certain number of students that can go out of the SCU.
For the Woduski Valley, for, yeah, the high school choice, public high school choice.
Woduski Valley.
Yeah, so the public high school choice, that's a collaborative that we work with for public high school choice.
All right.
Yes.
Okay.
And those, those students could choose to go to Crasberry, or the Crasberry students could choose to go to Hazen.
Okay.
Through that program.
Is that program, can that be used for the parents involved here?
No, they applied and were not accepted. They were not selected. That's why they're coming to you now.
I see.
So this would be looking at a more direct relationship between Hazen and Crasberry outside of that public high school choice.
Would it be too much to, because the timing is tricky for this job, right? So would it be, I assume those families need a real quick turnaround?
That's why I'm saying it would be, would you to have something, a discussion, especially around these two, maybe not the bigger flushed-out vision, but on, maybe on May thirtieth so that you can make a decision, maybe either then or in June, on whether you're going to allow.
Would it be possible to put together, and this would be a lot more work, to put together a basic policy that has some limits on the amount of students that can be exchanged?
Remember you got a, when you put a policy out, you got a three-month turnaround on a policy.
Yeah.
So it'll be September before you have a policy. If you just started today, it'd be September before you have a policy.
Except that we do have some parameters on the Woduski Valley collaborative on school choice.
Right.
And we already have that policy.
Yeah.
Which is outlined in state law or something.
Yeah, statute. That was a.
We can expand on that legally.
But we can just set the number, can't we?
Huh?
Can we set the number?
You've already, you have to set the number early. You've already set the number and it's set in stone, it's done. You can't expand on it.
You can't.
Make up a maximum, right? I think fourteen.
I think it's fourteen, but.
And it's smaller for Crasberry.
Whether we have even authorized.
Yes.
To, to, to do this. And I would, I would suggest that before we do anything definitive on this, we must determine if we are authorized to do this exchange, even though it sounds like.
Joanne thinks you are.
Okay, I'd like.
So I think she's planning on maybe popping in on the thirtieth and having a discussion with you around these two students.
Well, you know, okay, thinks is halfway there. But when we're talking about.
I haven't, yeah.
Right, I mean, how would you know? But I think we need a definitive signal that this is something we can.
I think we can discuss it, we can't make any decision on it that day anyway. So if we bring it up, the idea, see how they feel about it, then we can get the policy part.
Yeah, and I'm just concerned that the, I don't know if we can make a binding decision on this before the time the parents need a decision.
This seems like something that the district board would, it seems like something that, even though it's between Hazen and Crasberry, I feel like it's a larger conversation about.
I think it's between Hazen and Crasberry.
It's between Hazen and Crasberry.
I don't think this is a supervisory union. We could do supervisory union stuff, but I think this is a Hazen Board, Crasberry Board issue, just as some of these exchanges between Greensboro and Lakeview and.
Have been, always been traditionally between the boards.
So I keep thinking slippery slopes and can of worms.
I ain't gonna eat slippery.
You know, I, I mean, I think it's really great, but I think it's also part of a bigger conversation about, that we're beginning on the thirtieth, that seems like a little, that's why I'm a little nervous about how do we have this conversation without people going, oh, maybe that we're talking about a unified district, blah, blah, you know, like, I don't, I want us to go there. Ultimately, we, we probably should be thinking about which best for, which kids, based on, you know, situations in schools. But in some ways, if we, if we say this, it has to only be for a year, and the freshmen may not want, I mean, that's gonna be up to them, but I think we're, if we make a decision and say, yes, this should be great, even exchange, that's where the can of worms starts and the slopes start for me. Because then it's, what about other families go, ooh, my kids can go to Crasberry, I'll just come to the board. We have no criteria at this point.
That's what I said, maybe a cap. Part of the discussion would be.
Or like, like an application process or something? Like if you, I mean, if you, if you open this up to everyone, you're going to want to be able to like raise them? I don't know.
But what's that look like?
There's a lottery.
There's a lot of work that has to be done to make this work correct.
Oh, right. But it may be compelling for a kid here to go to, to, to Crasberry because of certain things that are going on in Crasberry and vice versa back here. And we haven't even talked about that. And I feel, again, it's one of those situations that could bite us on the butt, I think, coming back. If we're not really careful and really talking about it and doing it quickly, I mean, I certainly want to accommodate these students, it's not an issue at all, but I think we need to be thinking about some of the ramifications that could be negative, unintended negative consequences here.
That's fair.
Right? But so structurally, if we want to just open, have choice, that it should be open to every, every student with no limits, right?
But what, you could set one like that. I mean, we have, isn't it a lottery on the.
Yeah.
The structured one that's under statute.
Yep.
I accept your point.
But it would be the reason. We would want to do it for instructional reasons and that's what's best for the child reasons and not this luck of the draw. I guess that's, I want us to have a more.
I know, but the reason it's done by lottery is because then you eliminate any argument that it's a bias. Well, you didn't select my kid because, or you selected that kid because, that's why it's done by lottery.
Well, I, I get.
And there's a limit, that's, that's the only.
That, but at the end of the day, there may be some kids who could.
Truly benefit.
Truly benefit from a different school setting. And we're not being very student-centered, I guess, again, but I don't think there's any easy fix, but I just think we need to be really careful how we word, how this decision is made, how temporary. Because we've had, we've had a problem on this board before about making a decision that was not.
Kosher.
Well thought out. Speaking of worms and weepin' pig's blood, yeah, that wasn't as well thought out. And we got black big time for it.
What are you talking about?
A while, yeah.
A while ago, we made a decision to tuition someone out of state for special school and there was a lot of negative feelings about it.
At this stage, it's going to be perceived, if it happens, it's going to be perceived as either it's a right to do it, no questions asked, or is it qualified? So if you make a decision and you don't cover that first, there's a slippery slope. You know, how come that person could do it and this person couldn't? And what were your criteria? So that's worth certainly discussion, and I think we should go there, especially if the students, if this is for the students' benefit.
Which is why I think this, the conversation has to include professional educators as well, to weigh in on what that criteria might be that we might not even think about.
Yeah, because there are logistics. It's sort of like, everybody run over to that side of the boat to see that.
Right.
And then all of a sudden, fifty kids move and it's like, what, we don't have teachers, we don't have, you know, it takes a while. You need, you know, how many, if, if it's a big group.
Yeah.
You have to plan that.
Absolutely.
And this is a little, I think it'd be great to, to go to the meeting on the thirtieth, understanding what the intentions of that meeting are. Because I also feel like coming with a decision to be made is maybe not what we're looking for. If we're wanting to start by building trust and speaking collaboratively, I think that would derail the opportunity in that conversation. So I don't know, I think it'd be great to have Joanne there to, and hopefully, you know, and as many administrators as leaders and teachers as possible. Amy has a great big house, so that works out well. But I think in terms of like agenda for having that, I think, I don't know, my, that might have the conversation go into a place that we aren't necessarily looking for.
Right. I think what'd be cool is to come out of that meeting with a task group that's from both, that looks, that might be the first really interesting first conversation that we have is a collaborative boards, which is great, but that doesn't answer the question of do we do the switch? And maybe we just do the switch for the year.
And you might not, and you might not be able to give these two families an answer.
Right.
These two boards might not be in a position where they're ready to give an answer. So.
And the earliest we could give an answer would be in another meeting, and it would be June.
So you guys have to move at whatever pace makes you comfortable.
Yeah, I don't think June is enough time.
We only have sixty seconds to do it in June, which means all the dorms.
Sixty seconds might be a little bit of an exaggeration.
Right, forty-five seconds.
An extensive inquiry, you know, with the faculty, the staff, and then some logistical questions about how many students can, can move and all that kind of thing. So it sounds to me like we may not be in a position to give a definitive answer to these parents for.
When you want it.
This coming year.
Yeah.
Unregrettably, but at least we're on the case. And it's on the radar.
Wheels of justice.
We've completed item five and we're up to six. I wonder if, without objection, we can talk about the CIP, the Continuous Improvement Plan that's in the digital meeting file.
Can we approve the monthly financial narrative?
Do you want to do that?
CIP is the last thing on the list, so I'd say let's get the, we've already done number two. What do we got to do?
Get the other stuff out of the way. All right, well, let's do that. So we have a budget status snapshot. Is that, is that the same thing as budget adjustments?
You have, no, you have your budget narratives in there.
The narrative is in there.
Yeah.
And the agenda references.
Snapshot.
References.
You don't have any budget adjustments.
No budget adjustments, all right. So we have the monthly financial narrative. Are there any questions for John?
So right now, just so you guys understand where we're at, right now we're looking at, we went through with Sonia, and went through in the departments, and we basically relieved all of the encumbrances for open purchase requisitions that staff have felt like they're done with. So right now, it looks like on the expense side, we're gonna end up with about an eighteen thousand dollar surplus at year-end on expenses.
That means expenses that did not materialize, underspending.
At this point, and this is through April thirtieth.
Okay.
Right now, what's really tipping you over is revenue surplus. You have a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars in a tuition revenue surplus that wasn't budgeted. So you basically doubled what you budgeted for your tuition revenue. I think it's just a budget miss from last year's budget. So.
So at least as of now, it looks like we're in pretty good shape, but we have a couple of months to go here.
Yeah. And though most of those tuition revenues have come in at this point, so we're looking pretty solid on the tuition revenue number.
That's.
Huh?
Well done.
So that's actually been a benefit for us. This campus has done a lot of work to actually try to make sure that we could clear out a lot of those encumbrances that were just kind of lingering there and just weren't, we're just kind of taking up space. So it's been a great help.
Are there any questions for John on the narrative, the specific titles? If not, what is your pleasure? A motion to approve the financial narrative would be in order now.
Some.
There's a motion to approve the monthly financial narrative. Is there any further discussion? Hearing done, let's proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving the monthly financial narrative dated April thirty, two thousand nineteen, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, and the financial narrative dated April thirty is approved. The orders have made their way around. I guess now I can ask the board if they will approve for payment these various vouchers. Number one thousand eighty-seven for six thousand seven hundred thirty-six dollars twenty-eight cents. Number one thousand eighty-six, ninety-four thousand eight hundred seventy-eight dollars seventy-four cents. Number thirty-four, one thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars twenty-five cents. AP number one thousand eighty-eight, two hundred thirteen thousand three hundred thirty-nine dollars fifteen cents. AP number ten eighty-nine, two thousand five hundred dollars. Number. number 34, $1,595.25, AP number 1,088, $213,339.15, AP number 1089, $2,500, number 35, $1,495.69, number 1091, $6,740.79, AP 1092, $40,704.14, and finally, number 1090 for $94,984.93. So there's a motion to approve for payment, the voucher numbers just referenced. Is there any further discussion? Hearing done, let's go to the vote. All those in favor of approving those vouchers for payment, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, abstain, and the vouchers are approved for payment. Very well. Now, that brings us to the Continuous Improvement Plan, which is worth reading and perhaps worth reading more than once. I'll turn it over to David here in a second. But if you've read the plan, you've noticed the theme it highlights is that the school is underperforming comparatively to statewide results in math and English. And you might think that this is not unexpected in a school with a high FRL percentage, Free and Reduced Lunch rating, which is kind of a standard for a poverty level of students. And the reason why it may be worth reading more than once is not only does this identify a real issue with student performance at schools, but it maps out a way to address these problems in three or four ways. And it is plain to see that the plan out is going to take years. And if it's to accomplish this objective, and with that, I think I'll turn it over to David, who I think prepared this report. So this is a vast-reaching report that is written in the style that the education agency wants to see to support certain funding. If I were to put a report to the board that was about the immediate steps that I think are important to be made for the school, I would not have done it in this form. This is a, this is a state organized CIP, and it's gonna take people a long time to sort of get through this. I guess what I would like to do is prepare for, I didn't realize our next meeting was gonna be such a short meeting, but I would like to prepare a summary, like a quick ideas at a quick glance about what I think is actually in sort of layman's terms, a little bit more accessible about what I think needs to happen. And I mean, I can do that sort of briefly right now, but the main obstacle that I see for the school right now in achieving its forward movement and improving is that adults do not have enough time to work together to do the work that needs to be done. Any plans, I mean, this, this plan outlines all kinds of work. And the question is, how can this happen under the current structure? And I would argue that it's impossible to happen under the current structure. So what I'm advocating for next year is that we create a team structure that gives adults time to work during the school day. Because currently, right now, what we do is everything that we have to do in terms of school improvement has to happen between 10 minutes of food on Wednesday afternoons and four o'clock. So an hour and 10 minutes, it's completely unrealistic. And part of the design of American schools, which began with this idea that adults should be spending the vast amount of their time with kids and not with each other. But it's a over, it's a tremendous imbalance in the way that we've organized things. So what I'm recommending is that next year, and we have a plan for this in place, the schedule is developed around this, is that there will be a team, and all teachers here in the building will be part of a team. And those teams that work with those teams will be to figure out how we can best support the teachers, the kids that those teachers have. So they will share kids in common, they will share common advisories, they will have time to engage in professional learning together, which is not part of our experience currently at the school. There's not a lot of time for professional learning together. My belief is that a school that's a genuine learning community, where the adults are engaged in exciting learning and moving their practice forward, is a place that's exciting for kids to be in as well. So, I mean, I believe I can craft that in two paragraphs that will make it a little bit more accessible for people than, there's a reason why this exists the way it is, is because the state wants to see certain things addressed in certain ways. And funding is tied to those, those things. But it's really hard to not get lost in this document. This, this document was a document that was basically a rewrite of a document that was, that I inherited. So. I don't know if that's helpful for people, to people or not, but it's, I wouldn't know if I were a board member sitting here right now what to do with this document.
So you're not looking for an approval time?
I think we are looking for an approval time.
We need an approval for grant funding.
This is gonna do it to state.
Yes. David is saying he's gonna summarize this in his own words so that he can hopefully explain his vision a little clearer to you all than what can be derived from the state template.
Yeah, it's hard for me to see the vision in this.
Essentially, you summarized this vision as giving teachers more time or adults more time to work together.
That's the strategy.
Strategy, so, yeah.
Yeah.
But that's in here.
If you look really close between the lines, you can read it in there, but it's not highlighted in the way that I would present it.
So a lot of this is the OSSU SIP, right?
A lot of this comes from the, a lot of the language comes out of the OSSU.
Right.
Continuous Improvement Plan, yes. And then the principals kind of feed in their individual flavor into the, for their individual schools, into that. But a lot of the language does get just handed to them. Because it conforms to the OSSU SIP, which that feeds into all of their grant funding. And it's like David says, it's the state template, the state issues it this way. It says you have to have these things in here, but they conform with their grant recording.
Middle state boilerplate format.
Yeah, so it's not, it's really not a good.
About as clear as mud.
It's not the best way for David to truly communicate what he wants to do.
So it seems to me at our retreat this summer, it'd be a great place for us to So this, we just need to say, yeah, let's move to.
I move to approve and then open it up for discussion if there is any, but I like Dave's proposal, if he's willing. I mean, I tried reading this a couple times, and it's sort of like some of the stuff I used to read on the Select Board from the state, so. You don't wanna read it at 9:30 at night.
Unless you need to get to sleep.
Yeah, and I did.
Right, and it will be hard for you to place it in a context that's meaningful. I mean, there's jargon, you know, there's, I guess some of it makes sense at Faith's value, but there are many, many measures available to us to determine whether our kids are doing well or not. And this relies pretty solid on one, one measure. Having just been through that last week. Do I think that's a reliable way to measure what our kids are capable of doing? It's a little shot. It's a tiny little snapshot.
How did you feel about the scores that came out?
We don't have the scores yet.
Not from this year, but from last year.
I mean, I wasn't here last year, so I don't know. The only one thing I know about testing, standardized testing, from having been involved in it for the last 30 years. In every school I've ever been in, it goes up, and it goes down, and it goes up, and it goes down. And it fluctuates based on the kids. The kids are always different. And I think this is a very limited, I think it's a sad fact in our world that the powers that be put an enormous amount of weight on this source of data. And I think it's highly suspect. So.
Thank you.
This is, this is a plan that is driven by a trust and reliance on, on data that I think is highly suspect. So if you're sensing a little pessimistic tone, you're on the money. But I think we can put together a summary plan that will target the work that I think needs to be done, and it'll be pretty clear and straightforward and manageable. That's the other thing. It's like, you look through this thing, and you go, oh, my goodness. Where would you start with this? You know?
I just think of the video from Pink Floyd, Another Brick in the Wall. That's what I'm thinking about when I read this. And I've been thinking about that for a few years, since this all started.
So we don't need no education?
Yeah, and they got a boiler, you know, boilerplate format, and that's it. Mole to it, instead of everybody having their own identity.
Well, that is it, isn't it? With these reports, I mean, they're pretty much written in conclusory terms. Teachers will report feeling more prepared. This is how you know the plan is working. And it's like conclusory terms. And I don't know if the state really can have a better insight into what it takes to get the local school working. I mean, how would the state possibly figure out that you needed more time for the teachers to get together to work? They're interested in the transition to proficiency basis for learning and, you know, the things that, that data, we think data can tell us about. But then I would look forward to David's summary of what, what this place needs that's different from every other school in the state. Nevertheless, this is what the state uses to determine grant eligibility.
Does that call a question?
Did you call the question?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right. Thank you for reminding me about that. Is there any further discussion?
No, we called the question.
Oh, that's right. You can't have a, you can't have a. So let's vote on it. What is your pleasure with regard to the Continuous Improvement Plan? If you approve, please say aye.
Aye.
If you disapprove, say no. If you abstain, say something. And the Continuous Improvement Plan is approved. And I think that, that brings us to the end of the road. If you have suggestions on the next, for items for the next agenda, please let me know. I have one that I'm going to communicate to Taylor, and that is to schedule Talon Bryant to come in on the 20th Carousel Meeting, the Rocket Meeting.
Tax anticipation note will be signed.
And signing tax anticipation notes.
And we need to get a date for the retreat.
And a date for the summer retreat.
And really quickly, we got our postcards printed. I'm really sorry, I forgot Elijah and Audrey, as, he's in schoolwork, so these are going to go out to all graduates and their families from all of you. And I think they got everyone their names still correct.
And what we will need, this is for graduation day, what we're gonna need is people who are willing to come and help serve and get, be ready, because we're on the podium for graduation, so we'll need people to come and cut cake and serve lemonade. Will you be?
Well, does the podium include Audrey and I?
This includes, yes.
Podium?
I think so. Sit on the podium for graduation? I believe so.
I'm embarrassed.
Never has it passed perfectly fine.
It's a good question.
I think you should. But that's just me.
That's a good idea.
You can get up and go fanned away.
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
But we do need volunteers to do that. We're gonna do lemonade. We've got a plan for a very large cake that's gonna have many, I shouldn't say this, because they're too advanced. Never mind, it'll be a surprise. I'll keep, I'll let you know next week. This is the picture they took after Harvard, the students. Thanks, Gabriel, for doing it.
Yeah, of course.
And there were 63 graduates, is that true?
So moved.
The telepathic Talon, as anticipated, my request for a motion to adjourn. So everybody telepathically, say aye or nay. Okay, adjourn that. Oh, yeah, yeah. See you on the 20th.